Dan Pillar, Jason Hack, John Schroeder, and Buster are all on the phone. And then the room with us is Dave Russo, Nancy, Casey, Monty, and myself. Pat, are you on the line somewhere? Okay, if we please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
And I'm checking in.
Indivisible, liberatory, and justice for all.
Hi, Pat.
Hi, sorry to interrupt.
You're good.
We started a little early.
Move it. We did. You're right. The one time. Mr. Pillar, would you mind leading us in first?
Certainly. Good old bar ahead. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the beautiful weather that you've been giving us lately. We pray that you watch over the activities of the meetings tonight, and we pray that you you watch over our states and our country and our world as we continue to go through this pandemic and it can end in a positive note. We just pray that you give us all guidance in the decisions we make for people. Your name is great. Amen.
Thank you. All right, reading of the minutes from April 14th. Questions or concerns? And April 20th, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve and suspend the reading.
Okay, motion by Wolf. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion? All in favor of the minutes, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes approved. Approval of the agenda, please. Moved to approve. Same motion by Stern?
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion? All in favor of the agenda, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed same time? Okay, agenda's set. All right, 5A, engineers report. John? Between you and Monty, I guess? Or John, you want Monty just to go through it?
If you want through, I think you're not abusing too. Most of it's been gone through, but few things I wanted to touch on, I guess I was in town about two weeks ago, went around with Dave and looking for some different items that were of concern to add to our warranty punch list. There will be a warranty walkthrough for the 2018 project that we will conduct about a month prior to the warranty correcting period expiring. And we'll go through and address all those issues that come up. That's the next thing on there would be, we had our surveyors out there today doing preliminary total of the water storage sink site. From what I understand, we have the the location finalized out there. And we get with those topographic points back and go through those tomorrow. And I may be heading out there on Wednesday. We have to move some of those stakes around, kind of depends till we find out from our survey, but Drawn Interstate will be onsite on Wednesday to conduct those soil borings. So it's kind of the update that I had on that. Monty, is there anything you'd like to add?
Nothing on that. We did have, we were approached with some work on the sidewalk and gutter south of West Dakota Lumber. In visiting with Jared, he said this could still be added by change order into the project and all of the costs would be directly assessed to the property owner. Jared did provide a change order that apparently has been tentatively approved by Mayo Construction as the general for the project. Estimated cost is $13,041. That would be using a local contractor who had given West Dakota Lumber bid. So I guess considering that would be the next thing if we're if we're willing to do that change order. I did not hear from the property owner Friday or today. And I guess I just completely spaced out getting ahold of him this afternoon to see if that's how we wanted to proceed or if he just wants to pay for it all himself right up front.
Any questions from commissioners about this?
So I guess I got one on this water. Water, I guess. Water tank, I guess, location. What's the cost of the, I guess, of the borings and stuff like that?
That was included in that task order. I thought it included. I gotta pull it up here. Well, that was just engineering, wasn't it? I don't have it in front of me, John. Do you remember? I want to say it was like $11,000, depending on how many borings they had to do and the testing.
Let me see if I can pour up quick.
You know, because I you know, because I assumed, I guess, if that was not approved yet, I'd be kind of against that right now. If the money 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 on the state side is, I mean, mostly been made out of, made from oil, I guess. That doesn't look like a very good.
Oh, the state side, we don't have to worry about.
Yeah, well, but if we're going to do all this work, doesn't pay. I don't think if you know, if we don't do this project, I guess.
Because the state approved the 1.6 million for their side, so that's in their budget already. It's just our side. We were hoping on the Prairie Dog funds. We would either have to do the loan if we wanted to proceed with the project or just scrap it, yeah.
So we wait for that bucket to fill up?
Yeah.
Tax revenue. So it wouldn't happen next year, most likely.
Not likely.
But maybe '22, so. You know, the project seemed like Go ahead.
I was just gonna have a proposal about this. It looks like the proposed cost for doing the soil borings is $17,510.
You know, even if we end up not doing the project for a year or two, chances are pretty good that that soil boarding and stuff will continue to be more expensive in the future. So if we do it now, we would know whether or not that that landfill is suitable for the project.
One other item to add to that, too, they do have a possible reduction cost by $4,500 if there is good access to the site. Get the report out there.
Oh, you got good access. Yeah, there's good access. It's not terrible.
I drove up there with Dave. There shouldn't be shouldn't be any issue for them to get up there.
So that'd be a reduction of $4,500?
We have to, we anticipate reducing our cost by at least $4,500 if they now start able to access the site with the truck line is really great.
Absolutely.
Or they, or they were in there for a while.
Okay. John, when does the archaeological aspect take place?
Yeah, it's pretty good on the location.
I was gonna say, if we bore and then now they find archaeological again, relocate.
Or mitigate, yeah.
Perhaps, I don't check on Jared. We'll check with Jared on that. I'm not exactly sure when they will go through with the archaeological survey on that. I'll get back to you on that, Jared.
My only concern is if they, you know, I don't know what mitigation really means. But if they go up there and drill and they do the borings, and then a month later they do archaeological, they find out that it's burial site or fire rings or who knows what, and they can't use that location, then then are we out?
Yeah. How do you find?
$12,000?
Well, whatever it costs for the borings, yeah.
So it seems backwards to me. So it's like, the archaeological should be done for the borings.
They'll pay a lot more for archaeological.
They'll pay it anyhow, though, right? It's gonna be done one way or the other.
Yeah, I suppose.
I'm assuming it's gonna be done either way. I don't know. I'm just.
But if the site isn't suitable, you're not even gonna look at it for archaeological. I don't.
I'll get to that on that, Jared.
Okay. And maybe I'm backwards and maybe it's, I don't know, but I'm not, it's not my wheelhouse, I guess, but.
I guess then you have to decide, and you don't want to run out on Wednesday.
Right. I wonder if we don't have them out on Wednesday because of that. And maybe all projects are done that way where they bore first and then they then they do archaeological afterwards. But, John, do you know that or is it? What's typical?
I'm not 100% sure. I believe the, I believe the the process is to bore just to see if they have a suitable location. And then after that, they would verify whether or not there's any archaeological issues there.
Okay.
But, like I said, off the top of the head, we'll check with Jared on that.
Okay, well, if the chronological order is fine, I guess I'm, what Dan Pillar mentioned is, I agree with it. Even if we're not gonna do the project next year, you know, I think we should still bore, so we're gonna do, we're gonna do the project. We've got to, we just gotta wait for that amount of, or that bucket to fill up with the Prairie Dog funds, with the oil tax revenue.
That or you'd have to bridge finance with the loan until those buckets are formed. 2% state loan.
Any other question?
So I guess the only thing I got, I guess, was this, I guess, was this, I guess, the boring then approved or was it?
There was no motion on the task order approving it. It was just, the discussion was, when we find the spot, we'll get them out to do the borings and yeah. No, there was no formal approval of the borings. Because we lost the first location, so then it was all of a sudden, okay, we found another location. We'll see if we can get boring scheduled and go from there. Yeah.
We, do we need a motion? If it's part of the project that we're, I don't we could.
Well, you had, you had a formal estimate from Ron for doing that.
In the, in the
In the pack, if you know.
But it was never though, never though, I guess, voted on, right?
Yeah.
I mean, the way that I'm you know, I guess, like leaning is, I mean, I'd like to wait, I guess, with this project until we, until we know how all this stuff's gonna pan out in the state and you know, in the US and you know, I guess, you know, our current arrangement. I don't know if it's been like that for eight to 10 years now, whatever.
Yeah, it's not, we're not under, it's not falling apart. We're not patching it. It's, you know. I think the money was, the reason why is because the Prairie Dog money was allocated and and for infrastructure, water projects, and this is it fits, and it's obviously a project we want to do. So you're right, we, it's probably not necessary, but I don't want to lose our part from the state either. You know, there were a lot of projects that were not approved, and we were one of the 14 or 15 that were approved. I don't want to take our name off that list and then be I don't know if that, if we'd be in jeopardy of that or not. I guess we could find out.
The only other thing was the fact that they were talking about the inside line is gonna have to be redone in a couple of years, which is, I think, can't remember, was it $20,000 or $25,000 to do that? Does it pay to do that if you're gonna tear it down a year later? So that's just one thing we'd have to think about going forward.
So should we put Bron on hold? Can we do that, John? Is that, I know we can do that. But what, what is that? If we I guess we should, like
Are you saying you want, you want to try pushing the boring back until you have a definitive answer on archaeological?
No. I don't think that, that is a big of issue is just because we don't know what's happening with oil and the state of the economy and things like that. It's more what Casey's concerned about, I think. Which I totally understand. I get that, too.
Yeah, we need to, if we need to push, if we need to push Bron off and have another discussion, you know, well, how we mark the speed after this, that can definitely be done. We can make a phone call to Bron tomorrow and just let him know that.
And Jared, should we just push it off two weeks from next week? Was that plenty of time to get answers?
Well, we can push it off the next meeting. I don't know what's gonna change in the world of oil and
Well, yeah.
Probably nothing.
I'm thinking we're probably looking at more like pushing off for a year.
Or the fall, you know.
Yeah. Or this fall, this week.
Yeah. I mean.
Is that money gonna be available free burners?
The state side's already available, so that, that's already, that's there. So what we're just waiting for is for our bucket to fill up from the tax. Is it oil extraction tax or is it the production tax? Yeah. Thank you. So I, I just don't want to get kicked off the list.
What is the timeframe when that?
Jared, does the money from the state come into our bank account? Or does the project have to actively be moving forward and then the the check gets cut from the state fund?
My understanding would be like other projects, as work is completed, then you request funding from the state.
Do we know how long that is good for?
There again, my understanding, and I've seen at a couple of the meetings where they've extended projects beyond their initial timeframe, and the funds were still there.
And I'm thinking they'll probably do the same for this.
I would be comfortable pushing the project off if we, if we have certainty from the state that those funds will be available.
Okay, well, that, that answer we can probably get in the next, by the next meeting.
Yeah.
Nancy, do you?
If we get the answer to that, we also make sure that we understand what the chronological order is between the boring and the archaeological stuff. I'm guessing the, the order that is being presented is based on precedent.
Right.
But we can confirm that, and then confirm that the money will still be available for a longer time out onto the horizon. And then we can make a decision our next meeting as to how we proceed.
Okay, I still think that, I still feel like we're gonna do the project in a year or two, and we're gonna need to bore anyhow, and it's only gonna get more expensive. I feel like we should do the boring now, but I do understand where you're coming from, Casey. We can hold out for a couple of weeks and get some answers here from the state. From the Water Commission. And, and then John, I'm sure the archaeological is probably the right order there, so I'm not real concerned about that, I guess. It just was a thought I had. Nancy, do you have something else?
Mine was just the, if there's an expiration date on the funds from the state, do we have to use it by a specific time?
Okay.
And the other thing I would like available in the suite, so much somebody knows it off the top of their head, how much were we relying on from the Prairie Dog fund to complement the remainder of the water tower project?
Our share of the project was right at 1 million. We were anticipating $800,000 from the Prairie Dog. Just about $900,000 from the Prairie Dog.
Yeah, 80.
Yeah, 80.
Okay, any other?
And that's a, that's a big chunk of money, so yeah, I think we have to make it through longer part on that.
Okay. All right, so John, anything else from you?
Nope, I don't have anything else.
Okay, so if we, so back to the discussion on the works that was to be added to $13,000. If we want to do that, we would need a motion, and that would get directly assessed back to the property owner and not, not rest of the the district, correct?
Correct.
We would need a motion to add that.
And we're talking what, west of?
Yeah, red sidewalk and curb.
Okay. I will make that motion.
Okay, motion by Wolf?
Second that.
Second by Pillar.
Yeah.
Discussion?
So then I should have a question. You know, what sidewalk is in ours, right? Or not?
No, it is.
Property owners are responsible for the sidewalk.
And then on the curb and gutter, I'll just go just to him. And him, that kind of the benefits.
Yep.
It's, it's all curb and gutter sidewalk is all to the property owner. Because all the curb and gutter that was fixed all around comes being assessed back to the property owners. It'd be the same for him.
And he'll still have the opportunity to say if he wants to pay for it upfront or put it on in the project, so we need to hear from him, correct?
Yes.
Okay, we have motion in a second. Any other discussion? We'll call.
Wolf?
Aye.
Hiller?
Aye.
Hack? Hack?
Oops, sorry, hi.
Stern?
Hi.
Over in our.
Hi. Motion, Gary. Thank you. Is that it for engineering?
Did you want to talk about the task orders then for the project? For the engineering for the project?
Yeah. Do we have that up there?
Yeah, that's what's up there right now. And this is kind of the way it was made off from the studies and reports, please.
Everybody know that? Monty?
It was just a couple of meetings ago that it was sent out. But yeah, it is in the drop box again.
Sure.
But there again, we've got the soil borings within 30 days of the task order, but
So then this task order, we just put on hold until next meeting, too, or I, I don't know.
Yeah, we can, yes. Doesn't have to be tonight.
Yeah. I think we should.
Postpone that.
Yeah, we're gonna postpone that, the task order for the next meeting, guys.
Postpone for me.
That would be it for engineers then.
All right, that is it for the engineers report. Unless, John, you thought of something? You good?
Nope. I think I'm good there. Unless anybody has any more questions.
All right, thank you. All right, 5B. Smart reopening COVID-19. As you've all have seen, the governor has a list of items. Hold mine up here. For a smart reopening, obviously, we have had quite a few businesses that are already doing these things. I thought we'd just go over briefly, touch on the stuff. If anybody had any questions or concerns. I did have one person call me Saturday to think that there's way too many people at Jimmy's Lounge. I did go out there, and there were nine people in, inside when I went out there. So I don't know if that's something where, where every time someone has a concern about the amount of people that are in a place, if we have them get ahold of whoever's on duty, and the cops need to go out there, but I, I'm not gonna continue to do that. I'm not. I'm not gonna police it unless that's something we all think that we are gonna take turns doing.
I, I don't think that we should police it either. I I think the businesses are probably going to do their own policing. And, you know, if the cop on duty wants to walk through, I think they can do that, can't they?
Absolutely.
But we gotta just keep in mind that her capacity is large. She can have quite a few people out there just going to do it 50% capacity. I was out there. She's got less bar stools, tables are further apart. They're, they're trying, you know? Serving drinks in plastic cups, not reusing. You know, what I saw, they, they were trying to comply.
The movie theater didn't even take the refillable plastic popcorn tub for me Saturday night. You know, there's other businesses that are not even opening yet. They're talking to the drugstore. They're not gonna open until next week, Monday possibly. So there are people that are, even though, even though there's standards now, there are a lot of businesses that are going above and beyond those standards, so I think it's just something to be aware of. If you guys have concerns and you get phone calls, I recommend you, you call officer on duty, and we're not gonna individually do the walkthrough ourselves, so.
Oh, you want to proceed for our offices? I mean, these guys have been working the whole time.
Yeah, so the city office, you know, we've had, obviously, the buildings have been locked, and people have made appointments to come in to see either Kami or Monty, but I guess, how do you, how do we want to proceed here? Do we unlock the door or just not make it put a big sign on it?
Video?
Until they watch the video? Do you have any opinion on how we should proceed with opening the city hall?
I agree with, what I've heard is, open the door, take the sign off and, and not advertise it. I guess the one issue that we're gonna have is opening it up, but I think we're still under that 10-person rule. You can have more than 10 people. Is, is that still in effect?
Yeah, that's still one of the guidelines as far as.
So then we can't really have large parties in the large hall or the small hall? Can't have a wedding dance or whatever, so.
How do you feel, Monty? You're in.
Yeah.
Do you, okay.
We visited as the staff in the office here, and there's no concerns. We're just opening the doors. Our foot traffic is pretty limited anyway. The only other one that we have to think about is the library, because they're gonna kind of follow suit. How do, how do they want to handle things?
You know, they probably want to do away with some of their gathering. You know, maybe their, maybe their story time and computer lab doesn't open and or limit, or limit that, and you know. One of my concerns is, you know, for here, is those people that want to just come and stand around chit chat. You know, that, you know, it's gonna, you have to kind of self-police. One of my concerns is, you know, for here, is those people that want to just come and stand around chit chat, you know, that, you know, it's gonna, you have to kind of self-police. To tell people, hey, thanks for paying your water bill, now you gotta you should leave. Yeah, yeah, help, and you can't sit here and talk for a half hour. So I it's one of those deals that's what concerns me, but. Nancy, and I talked to you at all about the library and what they would like to do?
Not what they would like to do, they were just gonna kind of follow suit with whatever we did with the city office.
I know I read a note, I guess, like February, you know, and I mean, and they're gonna have you know, the floor, I guess, like marked off, you know, I guess, distancing this, the counter. You have the computers and stuff. And they're only gonna have like three of them or something. You know, they're you know, instead of the beyond, you know, they got a pretty good, pretty good, I guess, like plan. I can, I guess. Share that, I guess, to. I guess, notes and stuff that you have.
Okay, then that's how we'll proceed then. That's works for you guys down here, Monty.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, speaking of opening the public areas, have you park board, have they talked about parks? At all, or pool, or what?
The parks are open, they're still restricting access to playground equipment.
Okay.
Uh, there's still waiting. Pool would still be under that, how many people are you gonna have there type of rules, so as of right now, there's no changes for them.
Any questions from you folks on the phone?
We open up city hall again, I would suggest putting some type of note out on the door that says what the the rules for compliance are. I don't know if you want to entertain the idea like Menards or some of the others, where people that come in, if they need to be donning a face mask or whatever whatever the decisions are made, if it's just going against the the standards for all industries that is presented up there on the screen. Uh, we I think it's important that we document it somehow, put it on the outside door, something like that.
We can do that, yeah.
I think the one problem with telling them they have to wear a face mask is, and you have to provide them, if they don't have one, which could get a little costly. Um, encouraging them to wear one if you want.
Is that what they're doing at those big box stores, they're handing out face masks?
I don't know.
I don't know.
They've seen on the news, you know, like the targets and some of those, they're they're requiring everybody that comes into the store to have a face mask. And I I haven't heard anybody say that they're handing face masks out to everybody as they come in. We're not gonna have tremendous traffic in the city hall, I can attest to.
But the only place I can I can acknowledge that is I had a taxi in the last Friday at the Hornet Giants, and it, you know, did the temperatures at the truck door. Uh, suggested that, you know, like Nancy said, it says over there, people suggest that they wear a mask. I mean, there was people in that area, they were sitting that that six feet distance of those people not wearing a mask. But I don't know about big box stores either, I've heard that. They're demanding, I don't know, so it's seriously.
So I want to make sure that the people that are working in city hall are comfortable with whatever the decision is made on that. If there's all things that we're gonna be up. Exactly.
But looking at this, I think we just kind of post what they have in the workplace activity, the sign, you know, at the entrances. Should avoid entering if they have a cough or fever, maintain the distance. Those types of things, we can put on the on the sign on the door. Okay.
Okay, we'll do that. All right, moving on. Now down to eight A. Uh, we've got a various requests from Dave Brand.
Okay, as I indicated in my notes, this otherwise wouldn't have even required a building permit, because he's only building a ten by fourteen, which is under the hundred and forty-four square feet that's required for a building permit. But he is going to set it five feet from the property line in this in this zoning district, it's supposed to be ten feet. So he'd be basically having a five-foot variance. And as you can see, when I was there, we measured it up, basically, from this pole where his property line is, to the five feet is actually almost two feet into the building that's currently there. The only difference is he is gonna pour a slab for this building. This one is just setting on blocks.
So either we let him put a new slab in a nice new building.
Or making people.
Or keep the old one and it's even more across the property line, or across the there.
Can you tear it down, the old one?
Yes.
That fence in the picture is the perimeter of a yard?
The wooden fence is actually a foot onto the neighbor's property. So where the where the second chain link fence pole, that's basically his property line. That's the shared property line, I should say.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion. We'll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Hi.
Hack.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Over and out.
All right, motion carried. Okay, eight B.
All kinds of stuff.
Yeah, so Monty, I visited Monty last week, and we we've got quite a few things cooking right now with different issues with buildings and permits and timelines and responsibilities. And it's, I just wanted to visit these now and and take some action on some stuff. What do you want to go with?
The majority of these were given until May first to make corrections. This is the shy property, the first one on the list there that I had. You can see that he's taken steps to secure the it's plywood for skirting right now. You can see he's got his uh, gas line in, the electric line is still appears to be laying on top of the ground. Uh, this was the big side, whoops, had the large opening in the side. He's covered that, it hasn't been painted or anything as yet. There's still some work to do on the roof. So just wondering how, should I just contact him again, let him know that we're watching him, or you know, he did pay a fine that we had talked about refunding, does he forfeit that, or not a fine, but a fee for not having the building permit?
I think getting in touch with them and just giving that reminder of all the painting needed to be complete by June first in particular, because that results in every day after that a a penalty potentially.
Okay.
Is plywood an acceptable skirting for a trailer house that it's gonna rot out at the bottom?
Yeah, it's not even treated.
No, it's not treated or anything.
I haven't looked that closely at the ordinance as to what is required as far as skirting.
Sure.
We've seen that all over town, where they've done the plywood and then they do something over top of it or paint it or whatever.
Sure.
I can check on that and make sure that that's addressed as well.
Okay.
Uh, this, I only took one of this one, the Solon property.
So Wade, the Wade Solon property, obviously, back in October. We talked about this, and he did not, could not do any work last fall on moving his his business from a residential location because that was his busy time of year. Well, guess what it is now? This is a busy time of year again. And I know, as we all remember, he did, he was trying to buy that some property. Um, which was still not, it wasn't changed with the ordinance, with the zoning. Um, but we need to let Wade know if we're gonna let him continue to have a business operation out of a residential location. It's not a commercial lot. He has commercial property, commercial vehicles. Uh, commercial storage on the left side, there beside that garage is a, it's a
Semi-trailer.
Semi-trailer that he uses for storage. It's not a multiple curb that he's driving over daily with a truck and trailer. Uh, it's we need to make a decision if we are going to what we're gonna allow him to continue to do. And I think we've I think we've been pretty patient. Um, and if we have to tell him that he has to cease and desist using that location for um, a commercial business, that's what we have to do, but um, I think we've been a good neighbor, probably better than we probably should have been, so um we've not heard anything back from Wade on what his plans are, or where he's looking at relocating, but um I would like, you know, maybe I might send him a letter saying time's up, we need to do something. So what what's the thoughts of the rest of the board?
I agree, I think.
We need to understand amongst ourselves what if we're gonna talk about penalty, financial penalty and stuff like that. We we need to come up with some kind of means to determine what that is, you know, and not just a major reaction that we're gonna throw five hundred dollars a day or whatever, if there's something that's documented that says what source of action we have available to us. But I agree, Gary, we've been very patient on this. We did stipulate the April twenty-fifth date in the letter. Uh, we're we're at that point now where we at the commission need to start making things happen on this, so.
And the penalty may not be financial, Dan. It may not be a fine, but the penalty may be that he cannot, we will not allow him to use that property to run his business in and out of anymore, you know, that which could be a financial thing to him.
Do anyway, so so how do you enforce that?
Great question.
Well, just can't park his equipment there. He parks a lot of his business equipment there.
And so if he does, what do we do?
Yeah.
Pat?
Well, I'd have to see what your orders is allow. If there is no financial penalty, it may require some other sort of court order to require him to take a certain down. As with all court orders, there's always that issue about enforcement. So I guess financial is the best remedy, because that's the one that usually encourages people to act.
Mm-hmm.
I can visit with Pat tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, Pat. Monty will probably visit more about that tomorrow.
Yeah, that'd be good.
This is the property up on Central Avenue. And they have it until June first as well.
Yeah, so the next property we're talking about is up on Central Avenue, and it's that trailer house that the gal from Williston came and visited with us, and her, she did have a construction dumpster up there. Uh, they were hauling stuff out of this trailer. They have until June one. Uh, but we did ask them to board the windows up and whatnot, because we we got pictures with cats and whatnot going in and out of this too. They've not boarded it up. Uh, if we board it up, we will, they will have to pay for the material, time of materials to do that, and I think we need to. I guess I'll have my, I'm gonna Monty contact them tomorrow and say come and board it up this week, or else by the, on Friday, we will, and they will pay for it. Uh, unless anybody has any objections to that.
So what what do they?
Hope they just throw in there the reminder of the due date to have that stuff out of there.
Yep.
What do they have, what do they want to do with this place?
Remove the trailer.
Okay, so why haven't they removed it?
Uh, if you remember, they live in Williston, just the timing issue, and it's it's her her brother owned it, who's in prison.
Yeah.
And it's just
I have been.
Not convenient.
I have been contacted by a resident in town saying if they hook onto that and start to pull, like, it's gonna fall in.
Yeah, why has it not been condemned, or?
Oh, it is condemned.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay, so we can't just, as of June first, move it out ourselves?
Well, as as of June first, yeah. If it isn't.
Maybe the next step.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, I guess, too, you know, I guess, one of the things that they were kind of, I guess, worried about, because there was, there was maybe important, I guess.
Yeah.
Documents in there yet.
Yeah, but if it's open like that, they're
Yeah, I agree.
They're not worth saving. Cats are in there. They're urinating on everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'll notify them again that it should be secured with that June June one is.
Yeah.
No leeway.
Yeah.
Well, let's see, what else do we have?
Moving on, um we're looking at images of Larry Dolster's property with the school bus storage unit that extends to the street. Nancy, do you know if Jim ever got over there to visit with them, or?
He has not been able to, but I think he was sending a registered letter, was he not, Monty?
It actually is only going out tomorrow. I just finally got the other information I needed from the county, so that's getting mailed tomorrow.
Right. Because the person taking care of the property said, I'm out. So, yes, but he has been trying to get a hold of them and.
He's been around, and now he is, his pickup has been in an accident, and it's now sitting there with the front end torn apart. In the yard.
Last week.
Yeah. I saw him working on that last weekend, or a week ago.
And this is if you go around the north side.
And that's the north side of the building, right? Yeah, I I'm not sure how much more time we give this person. I know he's physically not able to do the work himself. I don't know if his son has time or, but.
Well, I just worded the letter saying this is an issue under our ordinance. If you need assistance or have any questions, to contact me, so I guess until he gets the letter.
Okay. Okay. Now, the next image, pictures we're looking at are the Langor, the Coulter Langor property. And see the letter where he had until May first to get the work done? Well, he started working on on June or on April thirtieth. And you can see, well, we have some images here from today where he's done some things to it. Again, I think we've been more than patient on 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 some properties, and we need to move to the next step here, in my opinion.
I guess this would be probably one that, in visiting with Pat, as to what our options are as far as any penalties or that type of thing.
And is anyone living in it at this time?
He's living in there.
And there has been nobody living in this property? Has it been condemned?
No.
No, that's the trailer moved in about a year and a half ago.
Right, but it has has. Right. But it has, has, I said, nobody's living in it. I suppose the county can't come and condemn it or who condemns them? The city or?
The city's inspector.
Okay.
Which I guess would be our-
It looks to me like the utility connections were fairly recent.
Yeah, he's got the electrical and the sewer, but there is no water there yet. It's a meter, we got a lock box.
And we still have a lock box on the curb stop for the meter area.
Gotcha.
So I'm gonna have Monty visit with Pat here hopefully this, or the next couple of days to see what we can do for a penalty here also. Or else he can just remove, remove it.
Yeah.
It's kind of, and, and I, I, I feel like when we give you until May first, you don't start working until twenty-four hour before that deadline?
Yeah.
I think I, I'm not gonna say anymore for control. Okay, so that's the, that's the, um, update and the follow-up on those-
I'm not either.
Planning and zoning compliance issues.
Hey, Monty, can you hear me? This is Jason.
Yes, we can.
Was there any, uh, sorry, we kinda got disconnected again, I'm calling back. Was there any, uh, are we still on the, uh, uh, Langford property?
Yeah, well, we're, we're wrapping it up, but if you have something to say, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, was there any, um, uh, communication with, uh, Mr. Langford at all last week, um, at all, about, um, water issues or anything like that, or was it, that, that was what I was told?
Uh, yeah, he did contact us, well, actually, last Thursday, we were contacted to say that he was gonna start working on this trailer. And he had been notified that there was a water leak at his other property that he agreed to start making payments on. And the water is turned off there now.
Which one had the leak? Obviously the, the brown and white one there?
Nope, the green one.
Oh, the green one, the one that he's, well, that he was living in.
Correct.
Anything else, Jason?
No, we just need that.
Okay. All right, moving on to, uh, reports. Water and sewer.
We have reached out for some bids for repairs to concrete, stuff like this, on, on water main break that we had up in the north part of town. And we found some disparity and, or differences in the two bids, so we're going to clarify some information and have them rebid so that we're comparing apples to apples. Once, once we get those bids in, then we can decide to go forward on the repairs for that. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Okay, any questions for Dan, everybody? Streets Cemetery.
Uh, but the only thing that I got with these, uh, I've been working with, uh, Streets, Streets, uh, still working on it. Requesting, request file, if you know. Um, cleaning up, uh, Cameron cleaned it up pretty nice, but taking drives their own town, but, uh, they've got both sweepers out. Um, that's working good, days, I assume?
No, yes. Can't hear my head rattling.
Outside of that, I really have nothing else to report.
I agree, where they can really, you know, obviously they got, some of those streets you gotta go four or five times, but they're cleaning up nice and they do look pretty darn good when they're, you get all the pea gravel out there, excess pea gravel.
Uh, me, yeah. The only thing that just popped in my head, since things have dried out, we, we got into those spots that, uh, were still removals past winter, where it pushes pea gravel into the drops.
No, not yet. It's drying up now. We're gonna get up in there and we're gonna try to vacuum by Olson Electric, take the back truck and drive over that and see if we can't suck them up instead of trying to sweep them.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, yeah. That's all I have.
Thank you. Finance, last thing, remember. Last week, Tuesday. Yeah, we had a busing board, board, uh, meeting there. Um, we made a, made a drug and alcohol policy update, uh, you know, just, just, I guess, uh, you know, normal, normal, I guess, normal, I guess, uh, normal, I guess, normal, I guess, normal, I guess, estate, I guess. Guidelines there, um, and a couple, couple of the grants, um, and we'll be ordering a new, uh, a new transit van too.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as they give us money.
If this is not cut.
Yeah.
No.
Any questions for Casey? All right. Police Fire, Forest Street.
Uh, I talked to, uh, Mike fairly today. Um, they are doing some tree cutting, um, trimming of branches, um, generally keeping them busy. Um, I also talked to Jim this week. He is still working on those, um, vehicle removals that we're looking at. Um, but there are some issues. DMV is slow in issuing tags and they say if your tags expire, they're still good for a while, so it's hard to get your vehicle's license and registered. Um, but they are looking at, um, sending out a summons for one of them. But we're not having court until maybe June, so we're gonna wait and see what happens. But they are working on taking care of one of those issues. Um, the other one I have is, um, Tammy is doing clerk of court. And I would like to see her get some compensation for that, although it'd be minimal. Um, I'm not sure how often will it happen a month?
Couple of, one or, one or two court dates in a quarter even.
Okay, okay. So if we, if we did like twenty-five dollars for, when there's court or?
I was thinking twenty-five dollars per pay period.
Per pay period, okay.
Be about six hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, I mean, just something, 'cause she is taking on a lot of added responsibility and and so, uh, do I need to make that into a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Wolf to, um, compensate Tammy for clerk of court for twenty-five dollars per paper. Second, by Stern, discussion. I guess, Casey, I know that Monty's also got increased, I guess, responsibilities too as well. Yes, Monty, it has increased some duties and it may, we may be discussing, um, something down the road here too for compensation for Monty, even though he keeps, he's shaking his head no. But that's not the way the world works. So anyhow, um, that'll, that'll be the next meeting or two. We'll discuss that more. Thank you for mentioning it, Casey. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pat.
Hi.
Hillary.
Hi.
Hold an hour.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you.
That would be all.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, HCD, Buster.
Okay, the only thing that I have to report on is that I Care Professionals did open up today and working on a family I care line. And I did stop over there for just a short bit and they did have some customers in there, so the pandemic went fairly well, reasonably well, I think. Uh, they moved, uh, uh, Friday and then over the weekend. And so, so that they could get everything set up, so they could open today, so uh, that's in place, so that's good to hear. Uh, that's nice on our part to have that kind of offer placed for the pandemic and, uh, uh, the party that's going to occupy their place downtown, uh, probably won't be in there until, uh, maybe, uh, uh, mid-May, of course, we're into May already, so, uh, I know there's some training that has to get, uh, taken care of before, uh, they're, they can start looking or dealing with customers or clients or whatever, so, but, uh, but that'll be down, that's gonna be in the works as well, so, uh, hopefully things will just, uh, continue to follow the place. Other than that, that's all I have to report on, Gary.
Buster, is that public knowledge or what's going on downtown?
Um, well, it, yeah, probably not.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's fine, no problem. All right, uh, thank you, Buster. Any questions for Buster? All right, thank you, and I've got nothing in my, um, report. All right, moving on to ten A, N D I, Endor, uh, annual meeting. The virtual meeting, and I'll try to attend that from my phone. You know, they usually have a good meal. You miss that one? If anybody else wants to attend that, that's fine too.
Yeah, as soon as I get the information on how to connect to that meeting, I'll send it out to everyone.
Okay. All right, down to twelve A, spray bids.
Get a notice in the paper for spraying. Find my sheet here. Received one bid proposal back from Mr. Malinsky, who has done it for the last several years. We did remove the lagoon and the fire department property since most of it is parking lot now. And his bid for the areas as included in our notice is one thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. And that was the only bid received.
Okay, if we wanna receive this bid, we need to make, have a motion to accept. Move to accept that bid.
We're gonna compare the last bid.
Half.
Half.
Second.
We have a motion by Stern, second by Wolf. Any more discussion? That was, did you hear that, Dan? That was half of what last year's cost was.
Yep, yep. Perfect, thank you.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Hillary.
Aye.
Hold an hour.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you.
All right, twelve B, estimate on replacing highway lights on two hundred.
This is the one on the northwest corner of the intersection of Third Avenue Northwest and Highway two hundred A. It was damaged as a result of some criminal activity last fall, December. Uh, estimate from, estimate from Olson Electric is five thousand three hundred and twelve dollars. He also submitted an estimate for the pole just across the road on the northeast corner of that intersection. Has some damage to it as well from, we have no idea when. Uh, that cost is nine hundred and seventy dollars. I did have an estimate from Edling Electric just for the one on the northwest corner in the amount of six thousand six hundred and forty dollars. So, and, uh, the damage to the pole on the northwest corner with this larger amount actually went through court and restitution was ordered. It will be collected by the district court and sent to the city to cover these costs.
That's great.
So I guess if we want Mark to start ordering stuff, the lead time on getting that pole is, sounds like it could be as much as a month or two.
You need a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
On both?
Both.
Okay, we have a motion by Wolf to fix and replace the one on the north side and, and do the one on the south side for the nine, nine hundred dollar project. Second, second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Hillary.
Aye.
Hold an hour.
Aye, motion carried.
There should be twelve C here.
All right, approval of the bills.
Twelve, twelve C, I got.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I, I put up, I distributed the wrong agenda here in, in the office.
Twelve C is the, uh, drug and alcohol testing policy for hazing, busing and city hazing.
These are the ones that were reviewed and approved by the bus board last Tuesday, the case we mentioned earlier. Again, these are standard templates provided by the North Dakota DOT and their consortium or their compliance officer. The, the drug and alcohol policy is a zero tolerance policy. So, uh, anyone violating this policy is subject to disciplinary action, termination, basically. And then a new requirement to the DOT compliance is standard operating procedures, which is basically how tests are conducted when you do observed tests. Uh, different procedures for the lab themselves or the collector themselves, if I can get to it. They're both big documents. Or did I leave them separate? There it is. And I'll have to change that date. I have it as adopted on April twentieth.
Okay, we need a motion to accept these, these changes and revisions.
I'll move.
Motion by Hillary. Second, second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Hillary.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Hold an hour.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you.
Now, approval of the bills.
So moved.
Motion by Wolf to approve the bills.
Second.
And second by Hack. Discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Hillary.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hold an hour.
Aye.
Motion carried. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good evening.